I just started the recording. I did already.
Oh, you did?
Oh, we're okay. So can we start?
Yeah, hold on. Let me just push this uh this one too.
And actually, can you bring in the both Steve options? Because I think it may be somebody that oh, you may have done that already.
Bring who?
Never mind.
Yes, we have two Steve Oakleys in the meeting.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you very much.
Okay.
One might be Brooke, actually.
Yes.
There we go. I think I just fixed it.
Yeah.
You just fixed it, okay.
Steve and Brooke, do you want to put your video on?
Uh, yes, for Steve Oakley, please.
Yes, and Brooke.
I I don't have the camera at my since I'm DPing.
She's behind the curtain.
I'll be sharing my screen.
Madam Chair, I'm ready.
Okay, great. So um I'll just start with the opening statement. This is a special meeting of the Princeton Historic Preservation Commission being held electronically via Zoom on November 2nd, 2020 at 4:00 PM pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of the time and place and agenda of this meeting has been noticed by transmitting a copy to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton, who has posted it to the municipal website, www.pristin nj.glove/meetings pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding the COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Historic Princeton Historic Preservation Commission will be held electronically via Zoom and filed with the Clerk of Princeton. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and are to be maintained throughout the year. Okay, Elizabeth, do you want to do a roll call?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Capizoli?
I'm here.
Mr. Endersby?
Here.
Ms. Satterfield? Charlie, unmute yourself. Here. Thank you. Mr. Shore?
Present.
Mr. Shatskin? Ms. Tassalar?
Here.
Mr. Von Zumbusch? Ms. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, so um we have one application that is a continuation of an application from two weeks ago. It's the GPNC owner of 20 Nassau Street Graduate Hotel in the Central Historic District. So we're taking, we're starting up where we left off, and I was wondering if Ed could give us a recap of where we are and where where we need to go.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant has pretty much completed their application at the meeting we held on the 19th of October. There are still additional issues that they were going to address with some revised plans, which I believe Mr. Dugresia is prepared to review with you and with his professional staff. We also understand there may be some interested residents who may also wish to join and testify, not just ask question, but testify. And if they want to do that, we would welcome them to do that. We would swear them in and make it testify. After today, we would prepare your official report and recommendation to the zoning board of adjustment. Understand this application is going to the board on or about the 18th of this month. So we do really need to complete our work today so that we can draft and send the memorandum on to the board when the applicant can proceed to the zoning board. All of the professionals who are with the applicant who testified the last time have already been sworn in, so they remain under oath. And with that, Madam Chair, I would suggest we have Mr. Dugresia either call a witness or start to review some of the revisions between the last meeting and this meeting.
All right, thank you. So Mr. Dugresia, are we ready?
Sure. So, as I indicated early, this has been an evolving plan and an ongoing process where we've taken the opportunity to meet with the neighbors, meet with people in the community, to kind of get feedback and address concerns as we we go along. We did meet with the residents from Bank Street on October 29th, I believe. So after the meeting with HPC, really, we focused in mostly on the aesthetics of that back wall. It tied into one of your initial comments, I guess, or discussions that you were having about the the brick work in the back and what we could do to kind of break it up. So we have a short presentation today. It's really based on how we've evolved the plan a little bit more. Again, these are conceptual drawings that we shared with the neighbors in order to get consensus or feedback. And they sort of, they've had a couple of things that they recommend, and it's our plan to show you that. And we were going to go to the zoning board with, you know, based on their recommendations, what they would like to see. Again, it really focuses more on the aesthetics of the back wall. I think, Steve, are you going to go through our design elements that we shared with the community and got feedback on?
Yes.
Great.
So Brooke needs to share her screen.
Yes, I am sharing now.
So as Christopher had mentioned, we've had several meetings with the Bank Street neighborhood, beginning back in August 11th. We met with them on the 15th. There was a site visit that was performed with Pablo and Josh, meeting with Tony and Bill, I believe, down in the neighborhood. And then October 14th was kind of our last discussion with them before the H or initial HPC review. And as mentioned, we met with them just this past week on the 29th to prepare for, you know, this presentation as well. So main issue, we had looked at a couple of alternatives with them related to the back portion of the property and kind of walked through some architectural arrangements, looking at brick patterns, as well as trying to get an understanding how to top the building to bring back the elements of the mansard that's introduced on Chamber Street, also carries over to the Nassau Street building. So just trying to create some scaled alignment related to how this building will appear differently than the existing building on on the backside of Bank Street. Other elements we looked at was, you know, some green wall strategies related to a terrace element that we have, where we have about a 20-foot-high wall adjacent to the neighbors and closing our auto court. So these were some main discussions that we had through the development of the design. And this kind of represents where we're headed with our current arrangement. Things we talked about through the course of time was, again, enclosing the auto court for acoustics. Also looked at elements of screening as vehicles arrive off of Chamber Street and what it means to 11 and 13 Nassau Street. So we've been looking at the height of, initially, we proposed a 10-foot-high fence. Looking at some of the geometry, we might be looking at something maybe around 15 or 16 feet being required to efficiently screen the the headlights as they approach. We would follow an existing installation that they have that has vegetation on kind of a cable wall system to block down that illumination. And again, we've been looking at some alternatives related to, you know, whether it's some patches of patches of green or whether we would be looking at a continuation of the the green element. Under the construction, we'll have, we'll be offset by the prop from the property line about six inches in order to properly excavate and create the basement. There are some areas that already have existing basements, so we'll be able to excavate those. And then we do go down a little deeper with our foundations related to creating a full basement-level parking area. So I think Brooke, this has some illustrations of the time, you know, some other options we looked at was putting a full brick element on top, metal panel, green walls. And I think the consensus on the neighborhood, this is a little more detail of what we did along that property line. The other element that occurred on the property line was, there's a small triangular area that actually has a utility pole and a tree. And at this point, the tree is in very rough shape. There's about 29 square feet there that would be left for the adjacent neighbors for them to possibly plant trees themselves or let the vegetation grow that's currently climbing on the wall. So in general, that's, you know, kind of an update, some of the discussions we made related to how to handle the, again, that arrival between 16 chambers and our building related to headlights. And we also discussed the option of putting some windows in, but, you know, right now we can't put any windows in because of a distance between building variance. And also adjacent to the commercial area, we're right on the property line, so have no ability to put legal windows in there either. So a lot of our discussion was on light that would be coming out of the guest room windows and recognizing that most of the guests would use blackout curtains overnight where they slept inside the rooms. So main element is there's no illumination lighting over any of the elements. We still are showing the the door out to the Bank Street lot extension that we have. And again, we've have a presentation on the landscape development of that area. And the the brick reveals would come around the sides of the building to add some articulation to the facade facing 16 chambers. And, you know, terminate as it approaches the corner of Chamber Street where it transitions into the front facade.
So this exhibit basically shows the brick reveal breaking up the, you know, the brick wall. Can you point to it with the cursor? Just, I think everybody can see, it's hard sometimes.
There's two two elements, yeah, one across the lower wall.
And then the two higher. Yep. Okay, thanks. Yeah, sometimes with printing or not printing, but producing these, you don't always necessarily see the shadow as much as you you would in real life. Okay, I would also like to to in our our landscape designer to kind of talk about the discussion we had as we're going through and looking at possible choices for plantings. John?
I'm here, Chris. Hi, everyone. I'm going to take over the screen from Brooke. We'll take you through eight slides, pretty straightforward. The first slide is going to be a playoff of the last frame that you saw, de-emphasizing the building and just showing the plantings. Basically, we're looking at, I'll say, a patchwork of a mix of clinging vines on the rear wall facing our neighbor over on on Bank Street and the actual Bank Street neighborhood, and then softening the top of the lower wall with ornamental grasses or boxwoods or a combination thereof, which will actually carry over onto the ground level as well, onto that extension that works its way out from the site on to Bank Street. So there's sort of a knitting, if you will, of the plant palette, both on the ground and and on the building. In terms of what these patchworks will look like on the side of the building, again, we're showing in this representative example something more formal, more of a square geometry, but we can certainly go with a free-form geometry here as well. The plant.
John, can you go back for one second? I just want to clarify one thing. So when you're looking at this, on the left-hand side, you see the lower wall, and then you see the 20-foot building. So that's about 10 feet and then 20 feet to the top. One of the elements that we discussed and the neighborhood seems to be supportive of is having that 10-foot wall and then having a metal louvered system above for another 10 feet. So that that's the driveway coming in. So basically, it's going to give them some good protection from the lights of cars. They felt that 10-foot was not enough. They wanted to see it higher, and we went over a few options. The louvered metal would allow plant life to possibly grow up it. It would also, you know, be not as solid as the wall itself. We thought it was a nice element, and we intend, because it wasn't shown here, I just wanted to say, like I said, these are some drawings that we're going through, but we intend to propose the 10-foot-high and then another possible up to 10-feet louvered system, metal system there when we go before the zoning or before you to discuss it here. But that's what our intention is at this point.
Yep. Thanks for that, Chris. And yes, again, just to point out that we did meet with our neighbors on the Bank Street side. Mr. Nelson took us onto his property, and we did get to see what you would see from the deck in the back. And there is this combination of of wall and I'll say lattice system in place now. And we've basically tried to replicate that with with the planting program here as well. So there will be some, I'll say, passage of of light and air on the upper level, again, with the combination of of plants playing up against that as opposed to a a solid mass, which is more or less consistent with what we saw when when we were out there. So just to give a flavor of the plant palette, we're looking at some Boston Ivy, which is there up against the wall now. That's nice because it does give some color, especially this time of year. And then you've got the consistent green, which is throughout the community of of the English Ivy. Then we play up some seasonal flowers with the Dutchman's Pipeline, works well. All of these plants are up against that wall now. So we're just sort of copycatting what what has been out there. Trumpet Creeper as well. Again, just gives a nice sense of the the diversity and the splash of color that that would be added here. This is what you actually see from Mr. Nelson's deck there. And again, you get a sense of that little lattice system and the plants growing up against that looking into the extension from that particular vantage point. And again, the plants that you see here are the plants that you saw in the in the prior photographs as well. Also wanted to point out that on the ground level, this is the way the extension out the Bank Street looks right now, looking from the building outward. Mr. Nelson's property would be on the on the right, parking lot would be on the left, 100% covered over now. The future plan is to go in with a corporate of lawn or or ground cover on the base and then a shrub mass on the left to soften and certainly provide some screening element of the headlights on the activity on the adjacent property. We did talk about providing some vertical elements here in the form of trees. We can do that. The applicant is certainly receptive to doing that. Again, bearing in mind that there is a nice little garden going on here along the foundation, including some tomatoes and vegetables. So we want to maintain some sensitivity to the the light that is presently there. One of the things we can do, again, this just gives a flavor of the plants that we would show on the ground. We've got boxwoods in the upper left. We've got a series of ornamental grasses or fountain grasses, which could also work their way in on the ground level and on the rooftop as well. They sway very nicely in the breeze and give a little movement, again, giving a nice soft edge to the building. And then finally, towards what I was just saying about incorporating some trees, I was thinking maybe something like a locust, which has a softer canopy, not such a heavy canopy, that would cast heavy shadows on the adjacent property. And certainly, this time of year plays up very, very nicely against that Boston Ivy that we were showing in in the original frame. So with that, that's the general sense of the of the plant palette here. And unless there's questions, I'll I'll yield and move on to the next witness.
I I think I just wanted to point out one other thing. We, there are a couple of trees that we're going to try to relocate possibly. The neighbor said asked us to push back as much as possible into the property on the corner. I consider it north. I'm not sure what everybody else considers it, but we're able to push back the wall three feet. So that's an opportunity there for planting. Maybe we can relocate one of the existing trees. If that doesn't work out, we'll find another tree. But it will be really a discussion with the neighbors and and that particular neighbor, what they would like to see there. But there is some flexibility. And thank you, John, for going through our current design. So that's basically what has changed since our last meeting. And we have all of our consultants that were here from the first meeting, if you have any questions.
Well, I really appreciate all the work you've done with the neighbors. And I would actually like to take this opportunity, if we can, to bring in the neighbors and get comments again, because we wanted to make sure they had enough time. So Elizabeth, are there people with their hands up or waiting?
Madam Chair, I just want to take this opportunity to explain to those in the public that they do need to raise their hand. I believe many of them were not familiar with the Zoom application, and they actually thought that we could see them physically raising their hands or, you know, making gestures. So I do want to remind them that there is a button on your computer where you can raise your hand, and there's a little hand that comes up. So if you're just patient with us, I'm just going to bring one member at a time. So the first one is going to be Michael Flower, whose hand is up. So Michael, we are going to be bringing you in. Michael, if you could unmute yourself and put your video on?
Okay. I'm sorry for the delay.
No problem.
I'm Ed Schmier, the lawyer. I'll swear you in. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Um, I swear, so help me God.
All right, thanks. Go ahead.
Well, the truth to the best of my knowledge. I really appreciate, and I'd like this to be entered, by the way, in your in your minutes. I really appreciate the concessions that that have been made on the part of the hotel. But I feel that one of the most important points was not addressed just now. And that has to do with the fact, I believe it's a fact, that no other residential building, excuse me, no other commercial building in Princeton of this size will abut a residential district. And it's just not any residential district, but it is, you know, a street of special historical importance, given the, you know, the nature of the street and the time when the the houses were constructed. And I'm also concerned about the the elevation of the extended part of the building, the part that they're rebuilding, that it's going to cast a shadow over the street, especially the houses on the end. And it's simply, you know, the height and the size are not really commensurate with the historical nature of the street. And I fear that it will really spoil the streetscape to have a structure that big just looming over it. So that's the point I wanted to make, and I would appreciate if they could address that issue.
All right. Christopher, did did you want to respond to each comment, or do you want to hear all the neighbors?
Yeah, I would like to have them go through everything. And then this way, we can respond one, you know, one time. And because I'm sure there are going to be some overlap.
Okay.
Rather than going back and forth.
All right. So Elizabeth, are there others with their hands raised?
Yes. The next one we will promote is Tony Nelson. Tony, you're going to be promoted. Tony, if you could unmute yourself and place your video on?
There we go.
Yep.
There we go. It was Elizabeth.
Can we can we swear you in? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but?
I do. Elizabeth, is it possible? Yes, I can hear you fine. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. And do you swear your testimony will be truthful?
I do.
All right, fine. Go ahead.
Elizabeth, is it possible to have Bill Gray on before I go on?
Oh, okay. Let me see. His hand is not up.
Oh, his hand is not up. Okay.
Let me see. I actually do not, I see. Oh, yes, Stephanie Gray. So maybe he's using that account.
He is. If you could have him go first, and I will follow him.
Okay, let me.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to promote. Bill or Stephanie, if you could unmute yourself and put place your video on?
Elizabeth, there are a few people who have asked questions instead of raising their hand that they want to be promoted, just to bring to your attention.
Yeah, they're, we are going to going to bring them in one at a time. Josh?
There he is. Okay. I'm ready.
Ed, do you want to swear?
Ready.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Okay, I'm going to read from the script here. It's fairly long, but I think it covers a lot of items. GPNJ Owners LLC created the hotel plan within the box they were provided. They're using the full width, length, and height limits to their advantage. More rooms, more potential revenue. That is understandable as such a large investment. But after seeing the plans and listening to their presentations, it has become clear to me that if they were permitted to build the north end of the building higher, they would. They don't see our street or our neighborhood as an obstacle. They show no desire to enhance our perception of their new building. No inkling that the Bank Street side of the building should look better for us, the residents, or anyone else coming down the street. A tall, flat, blank wall is what they what they're giving to our historic neighborhood. I've said it before to our own neighborhood group, whatever they get away with will be there forever. We have tonight's meeting, the Special Historic Preservation Commission meeting right now, and then zoning on November 19th, November 18th, to try to influence the outcome of the impact on us. The planned hotel structure will bring a significant change to the character of historic Bank Street. All of the issues we bring up tonight are intertwined with historic and zoning considerations. This is a big unprecedented project at the west end of the business business district. It will all be revealed how the peace and quiet and the character of Bank Street will change. Here are some elements that need to be resolved before zoning and before groundbreaking. Let's start with variance requests. D4 variance, FAR for area ratio. The proposed floor area ratio of 3.8 exceeds the maximum permitted floor area of 1.5 for the central business district. These are the zoning words. AD variance pursuant to New Jersey SA 40 dot 455 is required. The existing building has a floor area ratio of 2.67, which currently exceeds the maximum FAR. G. We feel that the FAR variance should be rejected for the following reasons. GPNJ Owner LLC, GPNJ, has far exceeded the FAR of 1.5. We question how the current 3.82 was calculated, where all the floors accurately included. Is the mezzanine a floor or not? The mezzanine physically raises the height of the building and should be included. GPNJ can adjust their structure to be closer to compliance to the FAR, for example, by reducing the height of the north wing. This will eliminate some problems within the adjacent residential R4 zone, the first being the visual and psychological impact of a brutal 65-foot wall directly against Bank Street properties. Oh, Elizabeth, I forgot to say, I want this, I'm sending you an email with this to be submitted to your memo.
All right, I'll look for it. I'll include it as a document once after you finish.
Thank you. So we talked about lowering the north structure part of the building. So we talked about lowering the north structure, part of the building, the new building. A less high structure will also have less impact on the sun shadow effect. More sunlight, not less, not less. Revised sun shadow study you'll see today, I thought they were going to show it to you today, they showed it to us the other night. Does in fact increase the shadows over Bank Street. In addition, it's possible that lowering the north end might eliminate our argument for not granting a variance. On the setback to the north west corner of the building. That leads us to setbacks. Section 17A dash 311 dot 1, side or rear setback adjacent to a residential zone. Maximum required, 10 feet. Proposed, 0 feet. The applicant is demolishing the existing three-story portion of the building and rebuilding. And rebuilding it from the ground up. The section along Bank Street is in the R4 zone and requires a 10-foot setback. Bank Street neighbors ask for no relief on the setback rule. This variance would be the first granted that would allow a 65 foot tall building right on the property line of a residential and historic street. It was argued by GPNJ. That the east wall of the Spring Street Garage has a setback of less than 10 feet adjoining a residential zones. This is not true. First, there is a 10-foot setback from the wall to the property lines of the structures on North Tulane Street. And those structures are zoned RB, meaning under the business column, not R4 under residents column. I have a picture of the example that I haven't been able to get it into the computer. You'll see it in the final, in the printed report. So they tried to give us an example of how there was a previous setback next to a tall building, which is the Spring Street Garage, I'll give them that. But that doesn't exist. So this is a first, residential, it's historic. And they're asking for a zero setback, which is, I think absurd. The plan's structure will be without a doubt the largest FAR variance granted in the central business district. GPNJ designed a building of excessive height immediately adjacent to a residential and historic zone. Which we believe is detrimental to the public good and substantially impairs the intent and purpose of the zone. Reducing the side of the north structure will get us closer to the required FAR by not granting variances for the following. Non-residential buildings are limited to five stories, section 17A dash 311. That requires a maximum of five stories. GPNJ is proposing six stories. And even that's questionable because of the mezzanine and because of the things on the rooftops and the shadows they produce. In addition. We should, we object to the section 17A dash 390 stacked parking. The minimum required is 100 spaces, the proposed is 80 spaces. In addition to that, section 17A dash 311, non-residential buildings are limited to five stories. Why are you at that? So these, these are all adjustments to the FAR which I started talking about. That they are asking to exceed even beyond the current limit of the existing building. There are other considerations. Noise. Standby. Exhaust fans on the roof and the noise and decibels they will produce has not yet been provided to us. The level of noise from cars and service trucks entering and exiting on the ramp. To the parking level has not been determined. Especially piercing will be the garbage and supply trucks backing into the garage area. The noise from the dust ramp. To the parking deck below will have the greatest impact on the residents of 11, 13 and 15 Bank Street. Air circulation for the below ground parking deck, we are told, is driven by two small fan units on the roof of the original 20 Nassau building. Is there more to it though? Is the design relying on only those two fans for air circulation in the below ground parking deck? The proximity of, to Bank Street of the entrance to the parking drop off area under the building will generate traffic noise. Especially the squeal of tires in a tight turn. Think Spring Street Garage, we've all been there, we've all heard the noise. That will be coming right out onto Bank Street. Okay, there's this item issue of the door on the side of the building. There's currently a door on the Bank Street side of the existing building. That leads out onto what is now an asphalt driveway and is currently owned by GPNJ. They've said that they don't need to put that door. Oh, did mine physical turn off?
Yes, if you could, there you go.
Do that, yeah. So the door, the GPNJ, the hotel team said, they don't want the door, they don't need the door. Their argument though, whenever we brought it up was, well, first of all, we want the door. To not exist on the new building. When they construct the new building. Our concern is that the door will allow employees and guests to come out onto the driveway to smoke, talk, mingle, et cetera. The door will be, will directly create unwanted noise in that vicinity, in that vicinity. And the door is immediately adjacent to 11 Bank Street. As soon as you come out the door, you're practically in the backyard of 11 Bank Street. So. We have a lot of noise on Bank Street now and then from students. And we do have some control over that. But we're really worried about the noise and the gathering on this. What is now a driveway section of their property. So. Pablo has said over and over that they could get rid of the door, that's fine. But then we're told by, by the hotel people that the township, for some reason, wants to keep the door on the Bank Street side. For some reason. And we'd really like to get to the bottom of that dilemma here. We don't know the answer to that. We have a problem with traffic and noise impacting Bank Street. Increased through traffic on Bank Street caused by hotel guests missing the turn at Chambers Street off of Nassau. Nassau will cause an increase in noise. This will impact us directly since our living rooms and bedrooms are so close to the street. It was argued by the hotel group that GPSs would send people not down Bank Street. But some other routing to get back to the hotel after a missed turn from Nassau Street onto Chambers Street. Two Bank Street residents, me and someone else, did a study. Using Waze, iMaps and Google Maps in our cars. And each time a missed turn on Chambers Street rerouted the map down Bank Street. And we believe this will continue to happen as people try to get to the hotel. And they will be coming down Bank Street as a, as a go around. A new traffic study appears to be happening right now in the corner of Chambers and Nassau. I saw a poll out there the other day with what looked like something. I'd like to know if that is true. And also the increase in traffic. Which will affect Bank Street in addition, in addition to the hotel will be when Triumph opens. In the old post office building in Palmer Square. All of those people that previously parked way down on Nassau Street near Triumph. And then, and then the pay lots down there are going to have to go somewhere in the west end of the business district. We talked to, this impacts the traffic also in Bank Street. We've talked to GPNJ. And Pablo David has agreed to work with the state to get some signage at the top of Bank Street. In our attempt to steer unwanted hotel traffic away from our street. Something simple like no through traffic. He said he would do the application and we'd like to see if that's actually going to be done or has been done. I had, I brought up a question the other day on the building height interfering with cell tower line of sight. We already have pretty poor service on Bank Street with our cell phones. Mainly inside our residence, inside our houses. When we asked about this at the last hotel meeting, a few days ago, we were told that there will be a. A new 5G pole at the corner of Nassau and Bank Street. When we asked a question to the township today, there is no application on record with the township for such a device. So we were told something that. Is actually not true. The loading zone on Chambers Street. Requires three spaces. But they're asking for a variance for one space near the entrance to the hotel. That's going to increase traffic on Chambers Street and just affect the whole west end. Not an architect, but I do have a sense of aesthetic. And I have a question about the proportion of the buildings on Chambers Street. The proposed north end of the hotel will bring an unpleasant visual to pedestrians and drivers on Chambers Street. The hotel is a bulk, rising 65 feet above Chambers Street. The adjacent building at 16 Chambers, the old firehouse, about half as high. The next building down is 22 Chambers and that's nearly as high as the hotel. The old firehouse building throws the entire street out of proportion and out of balance by being stuck in between two taller buildings. Where is the aesthetic? What is it that architects are going for the design, going for with the design of the hotel? Is it, it is not a standalone building. We must consider the whole of the block on Chambers Street. Let's get the north end a little bit lower and in proportion to the rest of the buildings on Chambers Street. Did somebody say stop? I think Tony is going to talk about more things about the north end of the building. I don't know if it's the purview of the Historic Commission, but. We do need to reach an agreement on any structural damage and. And anything happening to our houses during demolition and construction of the new hotel. I guess we'll have to pick that up with them directly. I think that's all. I might want to come in, might want to come back in later as more people talk. But that's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Tony, did you want to, you already got sworn in, so go ahead.
Hey, can I, can I, can you allow me to share a screen with you?
Yes, it's available, Tony.
Okay, is it on now?
Yes, it is.
Okay, well, first of all, to the commission, thank you guys so very much for extending this. To the, to, you know, for this additional meeting and, and focusing really on the back end of this building and the impact upon Bank Street. And, you know, we're really grateful for that and it really has coalesced this neighborhood together in a way. That I have not seen in a long time and we've owned our building here now for close to, 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 to 40 years. So it's been, it's been an interesting, it's been an interesting evolution. As you know, this is Bank Street today. You know, it is the most deteriorated street in downtown Princeton. And of course, we've now heard that they're going to finally move ahead with this. And this goes back to Marvin Reed when we first moved in here 40 years ago. To actually improve the street and as you probably know, there was a big issue about putting the wiring underground. And that would cost each of us residents $70,000 to be able to do it. And it just got turned down because it had to be unanimous agreement for the street and that's now not happened. This is an interesting one for you historically, you might, some of you on the board might have remembered seeing this. This was presented to you in 1992. This was the actual concept idea for the street when Marvin Reed, God bless his soul, was, was mayor. Thinking about how we would indeed begin to think about re. About reconstructing, reconstructing the street. I and my wife, Françoise, own both now. We moved from Belmeade back to Princeton. We owned the one on, we owned the one to the left and we bought the one on the right from Gordon Gunn. And have spent a considerable amount of money improving it with the intention that this would be the house that we would retire in. And it would be the house that we would begin to live in for the rest of our lives, hopefully. We had no idea at the time we bought 11 that the hotel was going to move ahead. And I think if we thought about it again, we probably wouldn't do it. A couple of things that you got to know is that we have gotten two offers from the hotel to buy out these two properties. And we have five more offers at this point for people to buy out the property. One way or the other, and we, at this point, we have turned them all down. Now, some of you, this is what our backyard looks like now. This is the biggest of the backyard. This is from our deck to the actual fence and you can see the historic building there, the found and the work that we've done. And all the plants that were talked about for us, essentially to screen that kind of backyard. This is the 11 Bank Street. This is the distance between the porch and the back wall and it is roughly about six feet. So can you imagine at that point when we first had a 65 foot high wall? This far back from, 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 from this backyard. It's a teeny little backyard, but I thought you would, you might enjoy seeing that. The question here is always what's going to happen with the quote unquote driveway? And you just saw some ideas for it. But what we've done is the, in looking at all of the pieces, and Bill has really talked about it already. You know, it's got a four ratio 1.5 and it appears it's about over four improper setback from the Harford District. Insufficient parking exceeds the number of stories violates the sign standards. And there's sign standards and other things I think you guys have talked about. There are demands that we would like, but I'll come back to these later. Now, the biggest one and the one of most concern, I would say, is this setback. This, this required 10-foot setback from the R4 historic district. And that's in your rules and regulations and it's on their map, shown here in the dotted line. And so you can see, you can see, this is, this is 11, this is 13. This is the driveway entrance into the actual site itself. And here's the required setback and here is exactly the actual building configuration as we have gotten it from other overall drawings. Now, if we look at what the adjacency is, the adjacency of the building, here's the firehouse. Here's the Princeton buildings. There is Swords Building, I mean Swords Building.
Tony, can I interject? Tony. We don't see your pointer on the screen.
Oh, you don't? You see it over here?
Yeah, there's your pointer, okay.
Okay, okay, so between the back of the firehouse and the backyard is 25 feet. Between the, the tightest edge of the university building is 15 feet. And you've got this building here, which is 14 feet. And they, of course, are recommending that the building comes exactly right to the property line. Or now they're saying actually six inches from that property line. This is actually the diagram that then begins to show what, how, the kind of spacing. And you can see some cases of spacing, although the driveways are further back. So there's a lot of light and air back here that of course will not happen with the actual process that we're actually, you know, what's being thought about as a part of the overall plan itself. Here are the adjacent setbacks and this is an aerial view from up above. And you can actually see here, this is actually the 15-foot setback and it's been a lot of discussion. Now, here's them, there's what is adjacent on the street and of course, there is nothing quite like it anywhere. This is what it looks like from the ground level. There was a lot of discussion last week. I mean, last Thursday about, oh, there's no space back there, et cetera, et cetera. And you can see here, there's actually a green area planted before you actually get to the building itself. And again, there's variations on this, but nonetheless, here it is, it's properly set back. The one that's closest to the property is a garage and even the building at the end is setback. Now, there was some discussion, Bill put forth this discussion on exactly how this would look relative to the parking structure. Again, that's the Google Earth shot of it. These are the, these mixed use buildings, there's Cop Cycle, which is really the closest to it. And you can see at least there's a green, complete green edge between there and the actual back, the rear yards. Of these actual property lines itself. So that became a, that became a very. these actual property lines itself. So, that became a, that became a very important issue as part of this, as part of this plan. Now, this is from, when the SCRAV group met, they met a month or so ago, they had recommended that this building be set back 10 feet in the triangle, that's essentially shown. That was their recommendation. And of course, that recommendation was, in fact, not even adhered to, because they gave us some notion that they couldn't somehow or another make the circulation work in there. And, you know, we tried it over and over again, and it seemed to me we could make that work perfectly well. But there are people who agree that this just would not be successful, or they didn't want to modify the building. But that was SCRAV's recommendation, which was essentially ignored. Well, here it is. Here's what, you know, here's what it looks like with the little blue lot on it. Now, the recommended overlay, as I said, was the 10 feet. And if you actually block it out, although it's got that curved corner, it would mean that the building should absolutely be set back, at least to the, the area which is marked in blue on this particular map. I mean, that's, that's the minimum that would, would be required in order to be able to make it happen. Now, we know that's a very peculiar shape, and that peculiar shape is actually going to affect the, the building in some form or another. And we have a compromise that we would really like the, the, the commission to entertain if they possibly could, and you'll see that in a little bit. So, there's the recommended setback. There's where that's, that's the 10 feet in the triangle, but the little triangle that you see there is what they're proposing. Let me go back on that. This is what SCRAV said we should have, and this is what we're getting. So, you're getting that little three-foot setback on the corner of that lot. That's our concession. Meanwhile, the rest of the length remains precisely six inches or, right now, on the property line. We, six inches is all brand-new. Now, we're going to propose some additional, some additional elements, but you go have a look at that. Now, here's what our basic recommendation is in terms of all the discussion we've had with so many people, so many phenomenal people have participated here in Bank Street already, that at some point, in order to get those plants to grow, and starting far over here on the, far over here on the side, this would be zero. That bumps against, all the way to here would be zero, because that bumps against essentially another property. Then it would set back two feet, and then here, it would set back about three and a half to four feet all the way along. And you'll see, so, and there's a whole lot of reasons for this beyond just the setback requirements that Bill started to allude to. Now, my simulations are not going to be as good as theirs. I mean, because they're just, I'm just learning this program, and, you know, they have, you know, huge offices to be able to deal with this, but this is as good as you're going to get for the time being on this. What the recommendation here is, is that this be set back, if you can see that, you can see the cursor, can you see the cursor?
Yes.
Back from the property line, that would be the plants that would grow up against the side. There's the, there is the, the court that's underneath. But notice the building here has been, the wall continues on with the grate that they were talking about. And then, at about 20 feet, it's set back, and it's set back. And what you're going to see here is a couple of places we're, we're recommending, rather than this big, long, blank brick wall, that somehow or another these buildings be stepped, even a foot or so, in a couple of locations, to be able to get some relief on the side of the building, so it doesn't look like one great big, one great big overall, overall, overall structure. Now, the next question was the actual driveway. Well, this is a shot from a different direction. This is a shot from Bank Street, looking towards the door, which is right behind that truck, which is typically, has been parked there before. You can see our little garden on the side of it. Here's a Google shot of it. And here was our first notion of what we should do. This is the first doodle that I did. Here's a sketch over. This is what we would really like to see that area become. Close the door off, landscape it, put a hedge against the fence at somewhere or other, so you don't see the headlights. And that's a simple landscape architectural thing. And when they rip up the street, which they're going to do, we intend to landscape the front of both 11 and 13 Bank Street to give it really a classic appearance of a classic townhouse that it should have. And then also notice the doodle of the light. They are going to take the lights down on Chambers Street, and our recommendation is take those lights and move them here to Bank Street, at least two of them, to Bank Street. Although, we wanted to get historic lights on the street, we thought it deserved to have historic lights on the street because it was originally a gas-lit street. But of course, that's been turned down by the town, and we're going to get Cobra head lighting. So, this might be a way in which we started. Then, I just, this is refinement of it, and we said, well, what would happen if we would actually, actually refine this a little bit? And then, you can see here, the kind of the variation on something which would be better, the grass, the hedges, the relocated light, all part of the overall plan. Here's another one. This is, gets a little bit more sophisticated. New sidewalks, a tree, and then a kind of a decent walkway in. We would expand the flower beds on the side. Now, the reason I'm saying this is that I'm going to guess a half a dozen times, I've said to them straightforward, I'll buy that driveway. I mean, it used to belong to 11 Bank Street, just sell it to me. I'll take care of it, I'll maintain it, I'll have a part of it, and we'll make a beautiful garden out of it, as we've done with every property we've ever owned. And that would be something that we would both pledge to the town, and it would become part of, it'd become part of 11 Bank Street. And then, you know, some variation, I said, well, listen, we got a parking problem on the street. If we did own it, would we park my little smart car on it? We weren't really sure about that, but at least you see here, the door is gone, the hedge is there, pretty much as said. Now, here is one of the other issues that have come up. How to break up that big wall? Now, one of the ideas is that you can't have a window more than a certain distance between another, facing another building, directly facing another building. But there's all pieces of this wall that don't face other buildings. They face parking lots. So, if in that case, wouldn't it be cool?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes. David, yeah? Hello?
Did I continue, or what?
David, are you making a comment to the chair? David, we can't hear you.
All right, go ahead, Tony.
We froze, David froze.
Okay.
All right, all right. So, the question here was whether or not there could be some windows put in the, the, the area up near the, the southern end, the southern block of that building. Not everywhere, but those places where it would be sufficiently and not directly facing any of the other buildings which are there. And that would begin to, really begin to help that. It would also probably be pretty nice for these rooms to have views out perhaps in another direction. But you can see here, the, the scale, the hedge, the, the green grass, the, you know, the growing on the wall, but it really begins to look at saying, listen, it would be much better. But I think this photographs gives you some idea in the scale of the people, how big this building is going to be. I mean, this building is massive relative to everything else. And the scale is not incorrect. It's, as you can see, the ground floor plan is actually a plan that's taken directly from, from their submitted drawings. So, now, this is a bit hypothetical, and, and perhaps it's paranoid, my part, but we kept, why do they want a completely blank building with no walls, with no windows on the back of it at all? And why are, why are they not only interested, but why are all these other people interested in buying my property? Now, I know people get offers on their property all the time around here, but I've gotten five in the last week, last week and a half. People somehow or another want to buy my buildings. Now, nobody else in the streets getting these offers. So, which I thought was really kind of interesting. Now, the regulations that were followed, as you know, there's three, the floor ratio, the height question, and we'll come to those. And then, of course, the other one was a kind of a design standard that are built into what I consider to be a really terrible zoning code. I really, I'd be, I'd be, I actually feel a little bit sorry for the applicant, because the zoning code for the CBD is so bad. It's really terrible. I mean, it's got to be modified in some form or another. But the one thing, it says there, "Buildings are greater than three stories adjacent to residential district shall be of varying sizes and heights with varying setbacks as to avoid long building lines that tend to act as barriers." So, I mean, that's pretty clear. That's one of the few things that are still left in this. So, we were, this is a big question on our part, and we did some sketches and said, listen, if you just extend all the hallways from where all the hallways are now, and you put, you extend the court, could you actually build another building there? You know, dig it out, it's in the CBD district, it would be right up to the edge of my flower bed. And what happens is they would just buy out of the two buildings and literally let them deteriorate and let them, you know, they can actually take them down, although you guys might object to it, but they might actually allow them to take it down. Now, the next question, and this is something I think they have, the applicant has really done very nicely with. When I actually look at the elevation, you can see that ramp. So, it's going to come up from, this is down here, if you can see the cursor, this is Chambers Street, that's a, and there's a pretty severe, a pretty ramp that goes up. Right now, it's going down. This one is going to go up. So, there's a car pretty much in scale, and there's the head, the center line of the headlights, and you can see, there's me back there, there's my house. How high is this going to be so that we don't get light directly into our kitchen and directly into our bedrooms upstairs? And that's just not us, it's the people next door as well. So, that was one thing. And then, you know, you put the headlights on it, and you figure out how it would actually impact. And I think, I must admit that the applicant did a really good job of saying, yes, we'll all support, and we build that wall higher, and then we'll put this grill on the top so we can grow it, so we don't have headlights. I mean, we're going to have noise, we understand that, a lot of noise, but we're not going to have headlights blasting into the back of the building. So, the west elevation was, and they've pretty much done that, and that is these two walls will be extended to a height of about, about 19 feet. And you can see here, the one that's in green, that's the actual area. This is the height of the wall that's recommended in brick, and then this would be some kind of a grate or grill up above it, of which, you know, most of the plants we've already planted would go. Now, this is the sketch that was given to us. I, this is screenshot, I just simply took off of it. I've asked several times if I could get these renderings, but I, they, they were not given to me. So, we just took a screenshot straight off. So, that's a building, that's the building, that's what you're going to see. You're going to see this kind of massive building. And it's a little bit disingenuous in the fact that you don't see any streetscape or scale in the front of it. So, they're not really wanting you to see really how massive this building really is, I believe. But here was a doodle that was done, and it says, you know, what happens if we actually add some windows to it, to break down that big mass in some form or another? And then, on the opposite side, just step this building a foot or two to break this one down into what looks like two masses instead of one great big one, because it's a bit looming. Now, you're going to see some other recommendations that we were going to make as well. But that's what it's going to look like. That's from Bill Gray's bedroom window. That's what that building is going to look like. And that's pretty much accurate in terms of, as you can see, the existing plan is at the ground level. There's the, the Gunn's building and my buildings are just there, it's kind of blockouts in scale. But you can see how high it is, and you can see even with this little bit of a, of a, of a change on the side here, a little bit of a change in elevation here, it starts to break and modulates that facade in some form or, or, or another. So, then, so then the question is, is here the two possibilities. One would be, you know, the complete blank facade, and we know it has to be on the, on the north side, but does it have to be on the south side? One has no facing buildings on it. And I realize that there's a fire code, issues of being separated between walls and walls. But the place where there's no separation, we could actually put windows on it. Now, the next question, really big one, was the floor ratio. Now, the Princeton code has this as a definition of floor ratio. The total area of all stories of all structures, blah, 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 and it says all floors. It doesn't exclude, as far as I can see, maybe they can find someplace else hidden in this code, but I've had a couple of people look for it, and we can't find it. So, the question starts to be, did they include everything? And so, there's the plan. And that plan says there's three areas that we wonder if they should have been considered, because they don't say they're excluded. And maybe they are. One is the, the, the area above the auto court, which is not closed. Secondly, are the two roof areas here where all the air conditioning units are. And the third big daddy is the whole basement, whether that's included or not, because right now, it appears that it is def, none of this stuff is actually, actually included in the actual floor ratio. So, it's really a question of definition of the floor ratio, and perhaps that could be clarified, because right now, it's not clear. This building clearly would go over five, it appears, if it includes all of this, which are actually in here. Now, the height and mass, you know, Bill talked about it, we're all talking about it. It is a big building. This is a big building. And I know you guys spent a lot of time on the chamber facade, you know, and Michael Mills and all the, talked about the brick and the mortar and the blah, 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 all that. And, you know, it's really interesting what they're doing, but this is a big piece on top of an existing beast. I mean, it's huge. If you take in that floors, and then they got a penthouse on the top, of course, not a penthouse, but a, a place that's screening all of the, all of the mechanicals. But you can see, it's higher, if you just, simply, it's higher than the massing, the mansard on the top of the 20 Nassau Street. So, it's really, it's, it, it's a big building. Now, this is a proposal that has come from the neighbors, from the SUNS study and everything else. One, it would reduce the floor ratio. Two, it would reduce the volume and mass of the building. Three, it would reduce the parking requirements. And four, it would be more compatible with the historic district if the following was done. Now, this means an elimination of 20 rooms, not more. 20 rooms would have to be reduced in order to achieve these sets of, of objectives. So, there is the Chambers Street facade, as it is now, straight out of their drawings. And here is what everybody on that street, and you'll hear more and more, really thought would be appropriate. Cut the building down at the, step it down at the back end. Step it down at the back end and do a green roof. I mean, a real first-time-ever green roof in downtown Princeton, with trees on it, with, with open space on it, something more than just sedums planted on a roof. I mean, a real green roof. I mean, the whole town's talking about sustainability. So, here's the possibility of doing it and pulling this building more and more and more into compliance. Now, that's kind of like, you know, again, that's the doodle, just clip it out. Now, there's the height and mass now. Roughly, you can see it to the scale of the car. That's the recommended. Step down, step down, step down. Not quite as high as a, as the old firehouse that now got converted to a bank and a, and a health clinic and a yoga studio, of course, with no parking, which is another issue. There's the street now, and this was done really early in the early sketches and talking about with the neighbors itself. This is how it would step down from the top. Still complete two stories of room, but for the first time, Princeton would really have a fabulous green roof. And I know that there were a number of you back and said, back, this area in the break here would be nice if that had a green roof. I think SCRAV folks said that, that of course was also ignored. Now, here's what it looks like, is you actually do the massing model of it, using all of the techniques that I've talked about earlier. So, it's a step down, step down, and a step back of the actual units themselves. The scale of the building starts to be broken down, at least on the, on the northern end of the building. Everything else essentially remains the same. That's what we're, that's what's being proposed. It's a solid block of buildings. This one, of course, has taken that one step to step the building back at this particular point. Zero here, two feet to three feet there, and then bend this a little bit more than what it was before. Keep that wall straight, and then this building on the top would, of course, would be set back in. So, that's the, that's, that's, that's what, that's what's being proposed right now, without the windows on the north side. So, it is, that's it. This is what we're getting. And this is a view from up above, but when you get below, of course, the building becomes massive, as you see here. Or you can see the scale of the person there relative to the, to the, to the building. And imagine that with none of the windows on that side. So, it's just this big, continuous brick wall with, with, with the, with the metal sheeting on the top. And everybody in the neighborhood, when they saw those two initial photographs, said, yeah, yeah, put the sheeting on the top. Well, of course, because that at least breaks the scale of the building down. But, but honestly, it's just not enough. It's just not enough from a historic perspective to begin to make that happen. And you can see the scale, more or less that scale, that scale here, again, both with the windows and without the windows. Then there's the height of the building, okay? Now, if you look at this, this is the, one, two, three, four, five, six, that's, you're limited to five stories or 65 feet. Now, if you include the mezzanine, you got six stories, and if you include the top, you got seven. It's supposed to be five. But now, the question is, is it five stories or 65 feet, which applies? And of course, they decided that it would be the 65 feet, and they would squeeze all the floors in there. Now, I think the professionals are going to object to this, but be that as it may, you can see the logic of cutting the back end of that building down to make at least the compromise to the point where we get the type of, of floor structure that would be reasonable, at least in the average across the board. So, and then the, so the question is, is, is the set, the question of the setbacks start to become critical. Again, this is the recommendation, two to three feet. Again, this is the recommendation, two to three feet, again, the gun parking lot, and then a step further, step back, perhaps up to ten feet in that court. And then a modification of the building in order to begin to make that happen. Now, what are the demands in the neighborhood? The FAR, we think it's just too high, at least relative to the back of these two buildings. Next thing, there's excessive, heights are excessive adjacent. We think that ten foot and two foot and zero foot is probably reasonable as a compromise. Add windows to the block, remove the door, nobody wants that door, everybody's afraid of that door. Now, as much assurances that we've gotten from everybody saying, oh, no, it's not going to be used, it's not going to be used. Nobody, nobody believes it. It's always going to be messy, it's going to be something out there. And at this point, it just, you know, I proposed a solution to them a number of times, and, you know, they said, well, you got to go through subdivision, blah, 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 blah. But you see, they also need it for Florya, but their Florya is so out of line that this, whether this is it or not, is not going to make that much difference to the variance, it's just not. So, so that door is a critical issue, and of course, you know, this is an offer we made to them. Step down the north facade of the building. Step it down, it's, it's, it's going to be a big imposing bulk of that, there's no doubt. And then cleaning and dust after demo and construction, everybody's worried, I mean, we just completely spend, I don't know how much money, having the exteriors of these houses painted to historic standards. Replacing all the windows to historic standards. And also, they're going to come and bust this building down, you know, and God knows how much dust that's going to cause. And I say, well, we'll take care of that, that's not going to be a problem, well, nobody believes it. I mean, you can't take a building like that down, you know, and I've been a part of taking too many of these buildings down. You can't control the dust, you just can't. So the question is, what happens to all of that dust when it starts landing on all these buildings and all these streets? And what happens if people ingest that dust? I mean, we don't know. And then, of course, there's the question of structural. Now, he said, well, they'll put seismic things and they'll do investigation, but, you know, I think Chip Kreider did it really well the other night. He said, do you realize that all the buildings on Bank Street have no foundations? They're all rock piled on ground. And, and if they slide, everything slides with them. There's no, there's never were foundations when they built these houses in eighteen ninety, in that kind of gaslight district when they hand dug these basements. So that's a really a serious concern for people, and particularly for us who are closest to it, and that we just completely finished restoring these houses. And I just, I just can't, it's a horror story to think about what might happen. And then, of course, the traffic and parking, and this is a nausea on this thing, this issue. I mean, you know, everybody knows, they, they literally didn't tell us the truth. Oh, no, nobody's going to come down Bank Street, nobody's going to come down Bank Street. Well, I think Bill proved that pretty well, all of us said, turn left, turn right on Bank Street, go down the street. And of course, the other thing is that, you know, we really feel that, from a historic perspective, many of us have had to seriously jump through some serious expensive loops to be able to restore our houses, the right railings, the right windows, the right color, the right pavement. And meanwhile, the street over the last forty years since I've owned it has continued to deteriorate. It's an embarrassment to see a house which is so, a, a district which is so unique, completely unique in the city of town in Princeton, being left in shambles for the last forty years. Again, since Martin, Marvin Reed promised we would have a rebuilt street, and that's never happened. You can't have a historic district without having both, a beautiful street and beautiful houses. Now, we're really doing our best to accommodate the commission's desires. But the other question is, is that you got to do your part too. And we know when the street is going to reconstruct it, all the trees are going to come down, the sidewalks will be replaced with poured concrete. We'll have Cobra head lighting, because, you know, somehow or another, we can't get historic lighting on this street. The trees, we don't know about what's ever going to happen to the trees. So the whole character of this street is going to change simultaneously, interestingly enough, at the same time, they're building a hotel. And you imagine what life is going to be like for us with this house, with this, with this building being torn down and under construction? And the road being under construction at the same time? I mean, it's, it's just a living nightmare in some cases for people. But the thing is, i- if it could be resolved in a reasonable way, I think everybody on Bank Street, plus the city of Princeton, would be really, really thankful that we actually did it in a correct way, and, and it really became a beautiful, beautiful street again. And I think that's what all of us are looking for. And of course, we're always worried about this light spill, how much light's going to come up from that? That, that, that courtyard in the middle there has got a glass roof on it. And if you got thousands of lumens, is that going to reflect back up onto the street? We don't know, because we have not seen any studies. We just know they're going to, where the lights are going to go, but we have no idea what the illumination study is actually going to be on this thing. So that's another one, and then, you know, no pollution on existing, you know, I've got, you know, two grandchildren that come here a lot. That, I, 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 I don't, I don't want that to happen. So anyway, that's, 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 that's the, 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 the PowerPoint. That's, those are the issues, Elizabeth has it, and I think there will be a lot more neighbors who will, who will also join in on many, many of these issues. But I, I think, I just thought it would be important for you actually to see what it actually was on an actual plan. So I, I appreciate your time, thank you.
All right, thank you, Tony. You know, I haven't really given the commission members any time to comment. Now, our objective here is to get a memo to zoning soon. And I think it's important for us to prioritize what our comments are going to be. Because as you know, with John Street, I, they didn't really listen to us. And so we, we ended up not being very effective. So if we want to be effective with our memo to zoning, I think we really have to prioritize and make sure that zoning understands what our number one priority is and make it very clear. So with that, I don't know, Ed, maybe you could go over what some of the previous comments are? And then we could talk about our memo, so that we can get that organized before the zoning meeting.
Madam Chair, I don't know if you want to hear, there are two more people in the public who would like to speak, who had their hands raised.
Okay, maybe we should get the public comment done, and then we'll get to our business with the memo.
And, and David Shore, the reason that he was trying to raise his hand is that he said that he was having a very hard time hearing Tony. He was kind of going in and out, and he didn't know if that was just him or if other members also had that issue.
Well, I heard Tony perfectly the whole time, so I don't know if anyone else had trouble.
I think the fact that David froze is an indication that the problem is on his end, unfortunately.
Okay, Madam Chair, so I'm going to bring in Melina.
And I just want to also mention that there, the Kreiders are in, put a, put a comment in the Q and A that they would also like to speak. So I don't think they know how to use their hand, but that's a third, third request.
Okay, yes, I do see two more hands after Melina speaks. Melina, if you could unmute yourself, thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Hi.
Melina, do you swear the testimony about gives the truth?
I do, I do.
Thank you very much, please go ahead.
So thank you so much for letting us talk, I'm just going to be, Tony and Bill covered most of the things and issues. I sent a letter also with all of the concerns that I have, so I'm just going to be short. So when I heard that actually, we're going to have a hotel at the Twenty Nassau Street, I was pretty happy, because I said, well, you know, it's a historic property. It's going to look even more beautiful, we're just going to benefit from that. And I've seen many, many beautiful Relais Chateau historic hotels, and I stayed in them. So long story short, when I actually saw the drawings and the whole thing, you know, I was actually mortified. And I said, oh, no, this does not belong to historical district, this looks like a jail. I hate to say that, especially the side facing a Bank Street. It's huge, it should be, the, the size of that building should be on a route one, it can't be in a historical district. So I don't want to repeat all the stuff that other, you know, members and residents already said. But we really, really like, I mean, I'm, I'm not objecting to the hotel, but you know, you know, you need to change that addition, that addition looks horrible. And we can't let that happen. So that's the aesthetic part. The other part that I do worry, it's our safety. And I renovated the house that I live in, I live in Twenty-Eighth Bank Street, and I owned that house for twenty years. And I know how hard it is to renovate the historical property. I do worry about the foundations of our houses, that they're going to crumble, because every time, literally, the large trucks go on two oh six, our houses are shaking. And when the township started doing repairs on the street, we already had some damage, and it wasn't that much digging. So with the big hotel addition and the digging out down the garage, I really worry what's going to happen with our properties. And, you know, once the damage is there, there is no way that we can repair those without really, really spending fortune. So, and the third issue that I have is traffic. And I always had a problem with traffic in this street, because we do have a, as you all know, we have a tiny, very, very narrow sidewalk with the cars parked, when somebody, nobody is driving fifteen miles an hour in this street. I mean, maybe we do, residents, but everybody else, and lately, it's just been terrible, people are zooming, they're using our streets to cut through the traffic. Chambers Street traffic is horrible. If you're coming from two oh six, every GPS would take you, if you're coming from two oh six, was that south, and going to Nassau Street, GPS will take you through the Bank Street. So we're going to have more and more traffic. I was hit once by a mirror from somebody when I was walking on the sidewalk. We have kids in the street, we have pets, we have tiny, tiny sidewalk. And most of the time, when the garbage cans are outside, bicycles are outside, we literally have to walk on the street. So with a huge hotel now, it's just going to be horrible unless our street is completely closed for the outside's traffic. Parking, whole nother story, I don't think that's important for historical preservation, maybe it is. Like I said, I don't want to take anybody's time anymore, but we just have to find some kind of compromise, because this is just, it's, 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 it's going to be a very bad decision for the future. If we approve the hotel as it looks right now. I'm not saying, don't bring the hotel, bring the hotel, but it has to be addition is not good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Melina.
Madam Chair, we have, sorry.
Yeah.
We have two more people in the public, Diego and Anne Maria Solomon and Jean Kreider. So I'll bring Diego and Anne Marie over, if that's all right.
And yes, Tiffany Gray, please, if you could add me, since I'm already in the queue here, so.
Okay, perhaps you could be after Jean?
Absolutely, save me for last.
Okay. Oh, I see Diego and Anne Marie. Can you unmute? There they are.
Thank you.
Hi, go ahead. Oh, you have to be sworn in.
Ed, you're muted.
Diego and Anne Marie, do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes, I do.
Yes, thank you very much, please go ahead.
Thank you. So my husband and I, Diego and I live at Nineteen Bank Street. And first of all, thank you for allowing the Bank Street neighbors to speak. I would like to testify in support of what's been said so far by Michael, Bill, Tony, and Melina. And I would also like to refer to ordinance two thousand fourteen dash forty-four, Article thirteen point three, that says that the purposes of regulations are to maintain and develop harmonious settings within historic sites and historic preservation districts for structures and archaeological sites. And we really feel that a sixty-five foot high building looming out over our historic houses with windows on the north facade, which are actually overlooking our house and garden, as well as the other historic homes, is not harmonious. Similar to Tony, we've invested a substantial amount of money in our home, and we have done that in a, in a historic way. And we really did it because we fell in love with the character of the street. However, we now feel that between the hotel, the work that's being done on the street with the concrete sidewalks, the Cobra lights are really not in keeping with the historic character. We are in favor of the step plan that Tony has shown us this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, and now.
Jean Kreider.
Right, where's, where's Jean?
I'm just bringing her over now.
Okay. Oh, I see.
We're working on it, you got.
Yep, that's working.
There you go.
Here.
The Kreiders, do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes, sir.
Yes, go ahead.
This is such a weird format, okay. So I don't want to go over everything that Bill and Tony went over, I'll just hit my high points. The wall is really massive as it faces Bank Street. I agree that it would be great if we could get some windows in that wall and some relief, whether you have to use fireglass or sprinklers to accomplish that, because you are on a property line in the business district. That's my first point. Shadows, so though, I guess the team will show us the shadow study a little bit further down. But one of the delights of living on Bank Street is the way the light plays off between each of the buildings. We're not shadowing one another, and we get sunlight in our kitchens and our, all of our rooms. By the way, it bounces off of other buildings. The hotel is going to significantly impact the first five houses on the east side of the street. So the size of, I like the idea, I've always liked the idea of stepping back, and I had asked this of the hotel team early on, if they could step the building back and lose a few rooms on the upper floors. Because that would really help with the shadows on Bank Street. And as far as the historic lights go, everybody in the neighborhood knows that I prefer just the historic lights at the top and at the bottom of the street. I think our sidewalks are too narrow to have them in mid-street. And we should have some sensitive light that, that lights the mid-street, not the Cobras. One of my bigger concerns is the evening parking. The hotel states that they have eighty spaces, but when they're at capacity, they'll need a hundred and fifty-nine spaces. And I wasn't sure where those, that parking was, is going. And I like the idea of the green roofs being where the hotel guests will benefit from them. I think that putting a treeed green roof might be a little too expensive, but having something with the lovely grasses that were mentioned before, I think would be really attractive. And I want to keep this short, because you have gone through a lot, and I think that's all I have.
Yeah. I've been a continuous resident of the street longer than anyone on the street. The other guy just went to the nursing home. Tony bought the house, stayed for a couple of years, left for a number of years, and then came back. He likes to use, we and all of us, we're individuals. We don't necessarily agree with everything. For one thing, we both think the door should remain on the little side parking lot. We agree that the building needs to be, have some breaking up, we agree that it needs to be stepped. We don't agree with streetlights up and down the street, and the streetlight, the street was never, ever lit with gas. And electricity didn't come until almost the time the street was built, along with sewers. And electricity didn't come until almost the time the street was built, along with sewers. At any rate, it comes down to two main issues. And that's what the zoning board will have to address. So the zoning regulations are an envelope. And this proposal has pushed into every possible corner of the envelope, and then some. So, the two issues, and I think they're really, that I think the first one, the most important one, is the density, which is the floor area ratio. And that's how zoning controls the density, primarily is through floor area ratio. They also control it to parking requirements. That's how it's always been done. The second issue, of course, is the shadows. And it's not only the shadows on Bank Street. A lot of people won't get morning sun. Uh, the church on the Chambers in Nassau, they won't get sun part of the day. Oh, forget about the stained windows. It doesn't make any sense. Needs to be scaled back on the north end, as various people had proposed. I don't think trees on a green roof are gonna work. I think there'll be a big windstorm and they'll blow over. But you can certainly have some sort of green space. And I think that the, uh, the patrons of the hotel ought to be able to access it. I mean, that's what it's about. I don't think there's anything anybody can do about traffic. And I do think we need a hotel. I mean, the Nassau Inn has not done a great job. Maybe that'll bring the whole town up a little. Uh, but it needs to match, it needs to blend in. And right now, it's not doing that. We appreciate the outside investment. But, you know, if you make assumptions that are unreasonable when you make a huge investment, that's on yourself, not, shouldn't be on us. We shouldn't take a hit for it. And that's about all I have to say. Good luck.
All right, thank you. Um, are we, Stephanie, did you wanna make a comment? Um, Stephanie Gray? I think.
Stephanie, can you?
I'm here, thank you.
Okay. If we can make it brief, just cuz we're, we still got more to do.
Absolutely.
Stephanie, have we sworn you in?
No. Yes.
All right, it's all yours.
Thank you. Um.
Extra parking spaces.
Of course. All the things that were talked about when it comes to noise, light, the 10-foot setback, the step downs on the north side. I think all of those things are really imperative. But about a week ago, I was privy to information that I had never heard of before. And that's that we're here at 14. So we're the third house coming down on Bank on the, on the left. There was once an eight bank. There's currently a 10, 12, 14. And that was demolished to put the parking lot in. Not the gunned parking lot, but on the opposite side of the street. And that really got me thinking. And it got me thinking about 1113, about the Nelson House. Now, if the Nelson House was sold, I would like to know if that house could be demolished.
I, I could jump in here for a second. Um, you're in an historic district, so any demolition would have to be approved unanimously by the Historic Preservation Commission.
So, what is the, what are the odds of a house being demolished on Bank Street right now?
Probably zero. So I'm just saying, we're, we're just talking about the hotel. And I, I don't think demolition on Bank Street is a question.
So then my next question, as I was thinking about the expansion of the hotel. I think I'm being more futuristic and my concerns are more toward the future. If the gunned building is sold, can this hotel expand into the parking lot further and closer right to the, whatever the variance is at street level?
Well, they, I mean, they're not proposing that. And, um, that would be a process exactly like this process. So I guess right now, I'd like to focus on what they're proposing and what kind of recommendations we're going to give the zoning board. So if there's comments on, if you have other things to talk about than what's been spoken about already about this plan, then, um, you know, we're welcome. But we'd like to, you know.
Sure, sure, sure. I think I just want to get it out that we're all concerned about the Nelson's property having so many hits. And the fact that it could be bought, it could go into disrepair by the owners, whoever buys it. And I'm just here to say that I'm concerned about the future of Bank Street. And I implore you to continue to do what you do best. And that is to keep the historic districts of Princeton beautiful. Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you. All right, so Elizabeth, I think that's all the public comment.
That's correct. I do not see any more hands up.
Okay, now I wanna go back to the commission members and talk about this memo that we're sending to zoning and talk about the priorities involved. Uh, what our number one should be, what our number two should be. And if anyone would like to comment, go right ahead. Cuz I can't see everybody at the same time. Uh. So Robert, yes, Ed.
If it would be any help to the, uh, to the members of the committee. And, um, I did work with Elizabeth on some of the notes we took from the meeting on the 19th. And if, if to begin the conversation, if you would like me to share some of those notes, which could go into the memo, I'd be happy to do that. And then we could add on to that from what we heard this evening. Or you could have the commission share with us additional comments.
Okay, that'd be great.
So from the, the hearing we, you already conducted on the 19th, some of the thoughts that we thought we would pass along to the zoning board were the following. Number one, as led off in Elizabeth's memorandum, the applicant should be commended for preserving the principal portion of the 20 Nassau Street uh, along Nassau Street up to the Chambers Street corner. Uh, number two, that the HPC, as was stated this evening by all the residents, that does endorse and support the green roof concept. And that's something should be encouraged. Number three, the, any changes to the Nassau Street right-of-way shall comply with the Nassau Street Street Escape Design Guidelines and coordinated with a municipal engineer, as should the installation of trees, which should be coordinated with the municipal arborist. And the board evaluates the site plan. Care should be taken to ensure that at the mass and the overall height of the new construction is done sympathetically to the historic properties on Bank Street. The applicant should be encouraged to reevaluate the floor plans in an attempt to maximize the building footprint, possibly reduce the building height, or recede the building footprint somewhat in order to reduce the impact on the historic properties on Bank Street. On evaluating the applicant's site plan, uh, the HPC would encourage that care be given to ensure that the natural sunlight is not blocked along Frank Street. And it should likewise minimize large shadows that are generated primarily in the morning for a number of the residential homes on the easterly end of Bank Street during the winter months. The applicant should be requested to present specific testimony concerning light, air, and shadows, and the impact on the properties on Nassau Street. It is recommended that all new LED lighting be installed on the property with a warm color spectrum below 3,000 K. That was a technical recommendation from Elizabeth. The applicant has complied with all of the demolition requirements for notice under the current Princeton code. The HPC does not believe that the proposed belay, blade sign at the corner of the building on Nassau Street and Chambers Street is appropriately sized. The solid brick wall facade facing Bank Street neighbors should be broken up and softened in appearance. HPC is concerned regarding the appearance of the main lobby entrance to the proposed hotel on Chambers Street. The board should consider whether or not the service door and the valet parking in the rear building should or should not remain. The vertical elements on the main hotel entrance on Chambers Street might be considered out of character with the other buildings in the central business district and the historic zone. Combination of the proposed glass and steel elements should be revisited. Beside of the new portion of the hotel on Chambers Street should be set back and broken up so that the monotony of that appearance on Chambers Street is avoided. Window treatment in the new portion of the hotel on Chambers Street should be revised to reflect and continue a window treatment on that portion of the buildings being retained at the corner of Nassau and Chambers Street. Those would be the, the 13 or so comments that Elizabeth and I culled from the earlier hearing. And maybe that would stimulate the discussion going forward so we can finish the memo and include or not include all or some of those comments.
I, I think that was excellent. And the only thing I would like to add to it, and maybe at a higher level, is, um, an emphasis on protection of the Bank Street houses during any demolition. And, uh, uh, and maybe of some kind of commitment for cleaning, um, if that's necessary. Um, I don't know, do other, uh, commission members have suggestions? Robert? You're on mute. Robert, you're on mute.
I, I had been led to believe that we were gonna see some sort of diagram showing shadows and light and so on, uh, at this meeting. And I, I thought that the applicant was gonna provide that, but maybe I'm wrong.
Uh, Mr. Dzakazia?
And if, if so, it would be useful to see those before we, um, go, I think.
So.
If there aren't any, that, that's another thing. But I, I thought we were gonna see something of that sort.
So the Bank Street neighbors asked us to provide information to them on our sun study. And we showed it to them at the meeting of the 29th. We did not think that we, I mean, we didn't plan on showing it this evening cuz we were, it was an exercise for the neighbors. But I guess we can go through it if you want us to spend a couple of minutes just go through it quickly. It looked like there was a lot of daylight hours, that there was, uh, some impact for a small period in the morning. Um, but it really functioned like the other building down the street, which is, is that 22? Um, in terms of how it, how it functioned. And it's not very different than what it is right now, actually. Um, do you wanna? Think, maybe we have it somewhere. Gorman, do you have, do you have the sun study?
Brooke, are you able to pull that up?
I mean, we thought it was a pretty positive result. And, and, and we really paid attention, not only as to just what's there now and what's existing, but we really highlighted the differences in another color. So it was really bold and stuck out. And did it not even every hour, but every half hour. So you could really get down to the detail. I would also say that this, this study was done just on the bulk of the buildings. So if they have, if there's trees in the backyard, if there's, uh, that would have also affected the shade that wasn't even accounted for. So this is just purely the building. So there, it, it could be covering or the delta could actually be in areas that there's a ready shade due to other things. So, um, Brooke, you wanna just page through real quick? I, I don't know, who wants to take us through this? But I, I would like to go through pretty quickly. So here is 9:00 AM. Um, 9:30.
And proposed.
Yeah, so you can see that the difference is on the rooftops, a little bit of the ground um, by nine o'clock. And 9:30, pretty much follows the shadows of the building, not next door, but the one after it. Um, and that the difference is really quite minimal. By 10:30, it's, and then by 11:00, there's, there's none, of course. But, um, I mean, it's a visual. We thought it was pretty positive that there's a lot of sunlight hours, that the delta between the two was pretty small. That was summer, this is winter at this.
Well, that was the, uh, soul equinox.
Oh, okay.
Fall and spring are pretty similar. This is winter. Which was just experience, the, you're in between these two.
When you look at the, even going back one, just go back to the, I mean, you could see the, the, the shadows from the Bank Street or cross Bank Street are even connecting there. So, um, as you roll through it, you'll see the changes. Longer shadows, of course, during that time. But really by 11:00, it was clean. Not a lot of big differences. And we did the same evaluation. Uh, I guess this is, I thought we went through the spring equinox.
You did the fall.
It's fall first, and then we're, we're following the seasons that we're in now.
So that's, that's basically it. That's how it, that's how it plays out. Nice, similar to the building below on the street. Um, and again, not very different than the building that exists. All within a zone that allows that height, too. The 30, the 65-foot height is permitted height.
And again, our 60-foot five, uh, height is set back 10 feet off of the residential with a 20-foot high wall.
Yeah, there was a lot of talk about having the 65-foot building. The building is not 65 feet on the property line, ever. It has always been set back at that dimension 10 feet in. So it fully complies with that setback. Our initial design looked at what was there, which is a 35-foot wall. And we were going just under that, and that's why we had a couple of rooms there, indicating that, you know, if you kept the existing structure, you could keep it there and just build the kind of around it. But it was a horrible wall. Um, so we, we thought, okay, we'll knock it down, start from scratch, make it look nice. We'll keep it around the same dimensions. After sprab, they asked us to take a look at removing those rooms. We've removed them. Now you only have 20 feet on the property line within that setback, where the existing is 37 feet. So it's 20 feet now, used to be 37. And everything higher than that is, except for grass. We may have some green grass a little higher than that. But everything higher than that is set back to meet the requirement of the setback. And the only thing that's occurring in that area is truck, I mean, not truck, but car circulation. It's the auto court. And we need that space in order to make the movements and have it function correctly.
And we're enclosing the auto court, which is different than 22 chambers, which you're then looking over a six-foot fence into a, on-grade parking.
Yeah, so, so we could, we could have actually made it conforming and remove the variance by doing that. But it's really not a great plan. It doesn't protect the neighbors at all. So we went with this, which. we went with this, which kind of encapsulates it, controls the light air and sound much better, much, much better in terms of a planning approach. And that's, that's sort of where we were. I don't want to get into like all of that, but I was just responding to, um, to the board's comment about seeing this study.
All right. Well, thank you for showing us that. I would like to get more comments from commission members on Ed's, um, draft memo and the, 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 the list of items that he talked about, um, the priorities, uh, so in general, um, I'm in agreement. I, I feel like the emphasis should be on the Bank Street neighborhood, um, and, and protecting that district. And I do believe that it is, it, it is important to commend the applicant for, for preserving 20 Nassau Street. That's a very significant part of the, of the project. So Celia, did you have a comment?
Well, I, to me, this is just another related thing, but I think the signage, um, the illuminated signage absolutely doesn't, um, conform with the sign ordinance in the historic district and we cannot have that, particularly the, the blade sign on the corner. It's just really not appropriate. Um, I understand that there's some branding going on here, but, um, I think you need to look at some of the examples of signage at Palmer Square. I know you're using a different font and different style, but, um, illuminated, definitely not. And I think we need to um, exercise all of the, the sign ordinances to keep the signs at the limit and the size that is permitted by the ordinance.
Well, maybe that can be included with the comment that says that the blade sign is out of proportion.
Yeah. Illuminated. I mean, it can be illuminated from another source, but it's illuminated from within and that's, that's really not permitted. And I don't think it's appropriate in the historic central historic district.
Okay. All right. As, as far as the other comments went, are you in general, are you in agreement with the, with the draft memo that Ed recited?
I, I liked what, um, uh, Mr. Nelson had to say about providing more wall modulation, um, and detail on the Bank Street side. I, I think that is a really blank brick wall. I, I'm not sure about putting windows there. I, I think that could create another set of concerns with, um, you know, light pollution and, and keeping that, um, the light reflection and, but, um, doing something with, um, step backs either at the rear or the side, um, facing the, um, what would that be? The south side of, of the building, um, you know, going toward, um, Paul Robeson place, having some setbacks there. I know that's a pretty big departure, but I just think that, um, it is a really monolithic wall, even with that upper level being in a different material and, uh, the fact that it's, it's so much taller than what's there now. I, I think that they really do have to give even, I know they've given some attention to the landscaping and the garden wall, but I, I think that everything that's rising above it really also deserves more attention. Breaking up that, uh, that mass and expanse of the wall, I think is something that we should insist upon. Um, I was a little bit concerned about the effect of, um, shadows on the street, um, you know, it seems like just based on what I, what we just were presented that it's not going to be that different from what's already there. Um, but visually I do think that there needs to be, um, further, you know, breaking up of that, of that wall. And the light, also light pollution. I'm not sure how they're gonna, what the impact, um, of the, the skylight, um, I guess that's above the parking or?
Of the drop off.
Yeah. What that is going to be, how, how that can be controlled at night, the, the, and I think that there hasn't really been, uh, that much information presented about that. So that, I'm a little bit uncertain about that and, and, and not pleased that given all the level of detail and the plans that that information hasn't been presented. Um, so that would be my, my comment. I mean, I, I do, again, I agree. I think preserving the, um, the main 20 Nassau Street building is, is great. And I think the graduate, um, will do a nice job of interpreting the history of that and, um, but I do think that, uh, we do need to be mindful of the impact of the building on Bank Street and, uh, that is really that, that little historic district does need help. And, and if we can help it at this point, just by, you know, trying to make this building a little bit more sensitive to that context, I think that would be a good thing.
I, I agree. Um, are there other comments from commission members?
You want to address the wall?
Yes.
Going way back to when we started the beginning of the meeting. I don't, I, I think that the, um, I think an awful lot can be done with landscaping more than what we saw. And what I, but what I, I think that having, um, a border, whether it's, I, I assume this is not English boxwood, but Oriental or, or American or whatever. Okay. Up there. I like the idea of, but particularly of things growing up the wall. And when you showed photographs of the, of the plantings that are intentionally or otherwise there now, I really think that's the, that's the approach that should be followed. I think the checkerboard is contrived. It's going to be, you know, it's to be maintained with a with a big work crew, but why bother? Why not let various kinds of particularly evergreen vines and whatever take over and soften that whole thing. If you can introduce, uh, trumpet vine or whatever for color at various times of the year, I think that's the way to go. And I, um, uh, removing the paving on that access at this point and, and trying to do some planting within that area, I think will also soften it. But, um, I, 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 I just think otherwise it could be contrived. As far as the setbacks are concerned, if that can be, if, I, I'd like to think, I know the revenue on a for 20 rooms over, over long periods of time is no, nothing to be sniffed at. But perhaps the rooms, if they had access to some of those levels, could, those rooms could have, um, an enhanced, um, uh, overnight, uh, charge because you would have that and it would be in, you know, it'd be an advantage on those particular rooms. And maybe that could offset the removal of, of, of some individual, uh, accommodations. That's it for me for now.
All right. Thank you.
Could I just?
Yes, David.
I, I just want to ask the commission to weigh in a little bit. My recollection of last meeting was that there was a lot of opinion on both sides about the entry lobby and how that was designed on Chambers Street. And I felt like the memo, the draft memo didn't really reflect that, but I want the commissioners to, to reflect on it and just say, you know, was there that kind of unanimity that there was a concern about the way the lobby was designed?
All right. Do other members, um, have comments? On that? Yes, Roger.
Last meeting was, was it the extensive use of glass or?
Or, yeah, um, it, uh, anyway, Roger, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to say that the, uh, the memo reflects my view of the, the entryway of the lobby. Uh, and in general, I, I think Elizabeth and Ed did a great job in terms of capturing uh, our concerns, uh, and the concerns that were expressed by some of the residents as well. Majority of the concerns that were expressed by the residents. Again, like to compliment the applicant. I, I think it's a great project for the town for, uh, renewing our business district whenever that's going to happen. It might be coincident with the construction of the hotel. The way things are going, uh, helping our tax base. Uh, I mean, though these are outside of our purview as a commission, but, uh, it's reality. So I, I think with the, you know, whatever we can add to what Ed's given us from, from his notes. Uh, I think we're, we're on track to, uh, give the zoning board a good report.
Yeah, I agree. Shirley, Shirley, um, just hit the unmute. You're, you're muted.
I also agree. I think what Ed has said, um, I thought we had said something about the size of the windows on the, um, Chambers Street side. I don't know if we addressed that, but, um, that was one of the concerns that I had, that the windows were just too large. But I do agree with the scaling down of the building. And, um, you know, I'm one who says, um, I like the history. I keep the history. But I call it, um, we were going from historic to trendy. So I think we need to continue to keep our history.
All right. Thank you, Shirley. So, um, other comments about Ed's memo?
Yeah. Can I, can I jump in?
David. Yeah.
Could I, I, I wasn't sure I heard in Ed's memo correctly about the windows. Could we go back to that point?
That's what I was, yeah, about the windows.
That's your head. Madam Chair, I could just read that part. Uh, that also talks about the vertical elements. So the vertical elements of the main hotel entrance on Chambers Street appears to be out of character with other buildings in the Central Business District and the Historic District. The combination of the proposed glass and steel elements should be revisited. Beside of the new portion of the hotel on Chambers Street should be set back to break up its monotony. A window treatment in the new portion of the hotel on Chambers Street should be revised to reflect and continue a window treatment on that portion of the building that will be retained near the intersection of Chambers Street and Nassau Street.
Okay. I'm, I'm not sure I agree with that very last part. I mean, I, I think what we really want to do is make sure that we're not trying to repeat, um, historic or existing elements in some sort of contrived way. So I, I think I was trying to say that we should not be trying to, um, mimic or carry over that window pattern. In fact, I think the whole new building should be as distinctly different from 20 Nassau as possible to respect 20 Nassau and to make the statement that we are not trying to be something that's, you know, some sort of phony historical reference. Since it should be its own thing, you know, we talked about greenery on the back, but let's have a total green facade on the front. Just make it its own thing. That's the point I would like to make. And I think that's what we missed in the memo.
Well, I, I'm very concerned about having too many items in the memo and I would like to make the emphasis on the protection of Bank Street, stepping the building away from Bank Street, uh, putting the landscaping and the greenery and breaking up the facade on Bank Street. And for me, that's the main issue. I really have very little objections with the facade on Chambers Street. So for me, that is not it. Yeah.
I totally agree with you, Julie, and I think you have to pick your battles and focus on the things that, um, you know, there are so many details, but I think that, um, you know, there's a program here to this building. There's, I think there's a restaurant and a bar and there are a certain number of hotel rooms. I mean, something has to give, you know, and I think that we need actual physical, real, um, stepping back of that Bank Street facing facade, not just some different treatments and some ivy growing up the first 20 feet or however, you know, you can't, it's like we're talking about a massive, you know, five story plus, uh, wall that's facing these Victorian homes in this, you know, this very unique district.
Okay. I, I think, I think I was misunderstood.
Yeah. Okay.
I was not talking about Bank Street. I was talking about Chambers.
We, yeah, we know. I was, I was just saying that I think the emphasis of the memo should be on Bank Street.
Well, I was the only one last week who was talking about Bank Street in the neighborhood. This is kind of interesting, but all right.
Let's not, you're right. You, I guess, um, I, I think we're, I think we all agree. And I certainly agree with what you said, David, about the, um, a, a modern installation, uh, in the new facade, a sort of, that relates, but is not just a duplicate of, uh, this facade of 20 Nassau Street is, is perfectly appropriate and fits and of the, of the, um, ordinance. Um, I think it follows scale and the, you know, the pattern and everything of, of that original historic building, but in a more modern way. And I think it's very respectful, yet it's, it's distinct. So I think it's, I think it's very successful, but uh, perhaps a bit too tall, but you know, hey, I'll give it a pass on Chambers Street, but let's, let's cut it down on Bank Street and give a little bit more deference to that district and, and do some stepping back.
Oh yeah, we need to protect them.
Okay. Um, uh, Robert, you had a comment?
I, 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 I agree with David in, in, in one respect that there's nothing wrong with being modern. I think what it is though, is, is something which should there, but what it doesn't do is it doesn't, that vertical element is totally out of character. And also there's a difference in the, in, with the windows with the scale. It's totally, a totally different scale. One could be totally modern, but the windows are not scaled to that. And there are basically several different window divisions. There are the ones in the old building and then the ones in the new that are bigger. And then there are the, the ones for the glass areas, which are even bigger. And it, it gives an impression of, of a building that's a totally different scale from everything else. And I, I think that's, that's a real problem. And I think that vertical element, which also doesn't reflect what really happens inside the building behind those glass in that vertical thing or, or window, or, or ordinary rooms. If that were set back with an even a glass wall that was a really truly modern glass wall, so that that provided light to the corridor and so on, it would be, would I think be more appropriate. Uh, the, the other wall, the connecting link is so far back that one isn't going to see that from the street anyway. But the other is so close to the street, it, it, it's just, it, it creates a completely different sense of scale of building.
All right. Thank you. Well, are there, um, other, any other comments or suggestions to Ed's memo? So I think most of us agree with the points that Ed included in the memo, but I just want to see if there's any, anything else. Um, Brenna, did you have any, I know you didn't like the, the blade sign.
Um, it was actually the, the other sign, the smaller one that I saw.
Oh, right.
But, um, I agree that, that the impact on, um, Bank Street has to be the focus. Um,
All right. So I think for the most part, Ed, we're endorsing the memo as you read it. And with maybe a few suggestions here and there, but I think for the most part, we're, we're, we're sticking to that, um, those points. So good job.
Well, Elizabeth has a lot to do with it too. But, uh, that, that memo subject to these comments, which, uh, of Elizabeth and I have, uh, recorded. Uh, so we would amend and revise that to pick up those comments and strongly lead with that the, the, the focus of HPC is the importance of the impact of this building on Bank Street and we'll build from there.
All right. Um, okay. So I, I think, um,
Good question. Will we get a chance to look at the memo before, uh, goes out?
Jill, uh, Elizabeth and I will draft that memo, uh, this week. And we will circulate it to, through Julie, to every member of the board, if that's what the chair would like us to do.
Right. Yes.
Yeah. You'll have it this week.
Great.
Thanks.
All right. Are there any other, any other questions or comments? Otherwise, I think we've, we've covered everything.
Just want to be clear, Ed, I'm sorry if I'm dwelling on this, but that on, we talked about actual, actually stepping back of that facade and not just further detailing or modulation, but you know, that would in effect be reducing to some extent the FAR if you start having some, some actual setbacks. And I, I think that's, that's a pretty major change to to request, but I think we need to put it in very clear terms that that is what we're asking for.
We could certainly.
Wanted to underscore that. And I, I think that other members agree with me. I'm, I'm hearing that from Julie. I'm not hearing any. I hear from Elric, it's a landscaping issue, but it could be both.
So I, I agree with you. I, I think of HPC and we could specifically suggest that as they evaluate the site plan, they look at stepping back that facade. But the FAR will flow from that. If they agree to do that, the FAR, as you point out, will likely go down. There may be other things that they think are appropriate, perhaps it's appropriate. But I think we would certainly put that in there as, as an issue that should be looked at by the zoning board. Ones that have to decide the site plan decision, FAR and all the other things. And we can share your position on that. We will.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask, can I just ask the commission something to clarify? Cause I know this will be asked when it goes before the zoning board is. But there is that variance for the setback 10 feet from the commercial district adjacent to the residential. Is that part of the setback the commission is asking for? That it start back there at 10 feet? So they would, that you would not support the variance or just step it back from where it is now, not necessarily meet the 10 feet?
So the question, the question is, go ahead, some of the.
Yeah, I would say both. I would say start with the 10 foot setback and, and take it by several stories at a time further. I mean, I'm not gonna design it. I'm just saying I think there should be actual setbacks and there should be the, the 10 foot setback that zone should be maintained.
Okay, and then setback as it rises?
Yeah.
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 And, and you're also saying that you would not necessarily be opposed to the six story variance, which right now five stories is permitted to be able to compensate that by protecting the Bank Street district more.
Yeah, that's a great way to put it.
Okay.
Right. Me, I agree. Yes, Robert?
Yeah, I, I think the, one thing though, I think that those studies of the sun shadow and did show that there was not an enormous change, which is what I suspected. But I do think that if there is stepping back, the stepping back should be from Bank Street rather than along Chamber Street. In other words, on that side, you could step back. And I do think that that 10 foot should, should be maintained down at the bottom. I think that's something that could, could be at the very lowest level. I think that would have a greater effect than, than the step back, which was proposed by the, by the neighbors, which really steps back on the north side rather than on the west side. I think on the west side, it would have more, more of an influence on, on them. But that's.
So what is the commission thinking?
Whereas, whereas also what, what it, it, what, what it does on the, I think what they're also trying to do is to show a transition to the other buildings on Chamber Street, but I'm not sure that's, that's, that's a critical thing. I think there's it's, that really changes the, the whole facade of, of the hotel building as well in a, in a rather strange way.
That's grew better.
But it's not, that is not typical within the historicistic of buildings being more or less at the same height.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to stick with Ed's memo the, the way it is. Because I think it's well worded.
So can I just clarify? So is the step back from the west elevation? Is that what?
I'm just saying, I think that would have a greater effect than the one on the north side. I think that the shadow studies really show that there was not an enormous change. What I do think would help more than anything else is a 10 foot setback that there's, that is supposed to be had anyway. And I don't think, looking at the plan of the garage entry and so on, that that would, one could easily push that back of that triangle and have a much larger triangle than even the start the triangle where the entrance goes down into the garage. I think still have plenty of room to manipulate the cars and so on.
Robert, I think that the, the 10 foot setback was what the other members agreed to start from that point.
Right, well, that's fine, that's fine. I, I, I think that, what I'm just saying is I think that's the most important aspect of it. And will have the greatest benefit, that particular setback.
Celia, can you just clarify? When you were talking, I'm sorry, you're muted. Can you just clarify, when you were talking about the step back, you were talking about the step back from the west elevation, right? Not the north?
Well, I was responding to what, I was looking at, responding in part to the, I guess, the north elevation set, step backs that Mr. Nelson had presented. I, I think there should be some stepping back either on the, the north or the west. Maybe preferably the west. And the 10 foot setback should be maintained as required by zoning. And there should be greater wall modulation than what was presented. And the setbacks would, I think, but I, I don't feel like, I mean, I think it could be either. So I, I don't really feel like I'm in a position to design it or require one over the other, so.
I just think that, that we just want to make sure that we have that written fairly accurately because I know that the, the zoning board will ask.
Right.
Right, so how, Ed, how do you have it written? As far as the the, is there a comment directly related to setbacks or you're, are you adding that?
Well, the, the earlier comment dealing with setbacks picked up on the theme of, of, of breaking it up, a further setback to the properties on Bank Street. We could also add and address that issue of the 10 foot, variant 10 foot requirement on the westerly side of the elevation. Hey, Elizabeth is right. The zoning board would like to hear some comment on that.
That, well, that.
We'll add that.
That sounds perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Now, would we need to vote to endorse the draft or are we just going to do this by email?
I always think it's.
Well, we're, we're going to circulate. All right. Normally what we do, Madam Chair, is that when, when you're called upon to share your recommendations of planning to zoning board, we do it, as you know, by memorandum. So Elizabeth and I will put together something in the next day or so and circulate that to you and then you and turn to the board. And once everybody on the board is comfortable with it, it'll be sent out. So you really don't have to vote on anything.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other comments?
I have one last question. Oh, did, am I stepping in some?
No, go ahead.
So I'm just trying to figure out, we, we've talked about the physical changes and they're still mostly addressed in the memo we already have. How do we take the concerns that were brought up by the, the people in the historic district that are not physical changes necessarily, but are impact on the district? And again, protecting them, the issues they brought up about things like noise. That will have an impact on a historic district if people don't want to live there anymore and their property values go down. But I don't know that's a physical thing, but I, I feel like we, we need to take their comments in some way and make sure that they get recognized.
David, that, that is a, clearly an issue that is in the purview of the land use board, meaning the zoning board. I think we can also indicate in the memorandum, when we talk about the principal concern of HPC with the impact on the Bank Street Historic District. And we can include stuff like noise, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
They're the ones that are gonna have to hear testimony on it and, and really address it. They're the land use board.
Good. I just wanted to make sure that we were respecting what was told to us. And that would do it, I think.
All right. Well, thank everyone, thank you everyone for attending. If anyone else has I think everyone has had plenty of chances to comment. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much for attending. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
You're timed.
Bye.
Just like to say, Julie, that the question of lighting on Bank Street was brought up, but that really isn't part of this application at all. However,
Right.
the Historic Preservation Commission also recommended different lighting that was more appropriate, although putting gaslight type fixtures back would not be appropriate because they were not used before.
No, yeah, we're not, and we're not.
To do with this application.
Yeah.
I didn't want to bring it up then, but we did discuss this and.
Yeah. I, I agree. I agree. All right. Thanks, Robert. Okay.
Good night.
Good night.